We have agricultural at some point, you know.
Soybean place.
Soybean. It's there now, now we try to cultivate more uses for it.
The last one I got is, last year we turned over eighteen or twenty thousand dollars for downtown.
Probably closer to two or three years ago, at least two years, yeah, just two years ago.
How much, it's how much is left in that and what, what did we spend that on?
That has been used to help rehab different locations, for example, um, the, um, the bridal shop downtown was awarded a couple thousand dollars, they were able to use that to leverage, uh, a loan at CCOM to do building repairs. The Gojins, the Gojins were able to buy some doors for their new construction. Sim- simply you, East Arbor Street, towards, um, paving of their driveway. Folks town closed for some of the renovation work on his building on Andrews Street. The theater was awarded. Theater's been awarded, some funds haven't used them yet, gonna see if they can reallocate it from their front doors to marquee. There's probably, we have three more requests in house, probably about five thousand left of those funds that are, that haven't been awarded as of yet. Can I think of my missing one? Easy does it, it means ours, and they're building.
Thank you.
Going back to the RLS for, um, for some products, uh, wasn't a prerequisite, as well as the scales, not proportionately with it.
Um, current, uh, right now, current removal will let, if we need to use a scale, will let us use this existing scale.
Okay.
And he will also, there was a couple, um, people who had access to different things, um, and he would provide, if we needed to, could provide, uh, service with a loader or something for loading using his, his equipment and his vehicle. But at, right now, we do have a gentleman's agreement that if something has to be waived, that he is willing to use a scale split.
The one thing though, that we talked about previously with the RLS, where the RLS, where there's no, has this material allowed on this, because we're too close to the main line, so you can't have oil, you can't do, you can't have any chemicals from a safety standpoint.
I plan on being at the meeting tomorrow, but I want to thank Larry for your security of service to let him know, you know, your terms stuff shortly, I think, right?
Yeah, a couple of you on, we're not going to go easy. We're gonna keep them on retainers.
The downtown money left is, Tom, is about five thousand dollars?
Yes, we have two or three projects that, we have three requests.
Requesting just that one.
Okay.
And, and so the projects that you funded outside of the original grant, the, this, the rehab, whatever we called it, uh. Main Street grant?
Yeah.
Or the twenty thousand?
Well, um, didn't we use some of that money, the ma- the ma- the money, the twenty thousand we gave you for the Main Street program?
Main Street program is something different.
Okay, I thought, I thought we used some of that to leverage some of the Main Street money, okay.
That was money you had left over from compact money.
Yeah.
Used towards revitalization of the building.
Okay, alright, and so the criteria that you use in awarding that money is that, um, it's, they're outright grants to businesses, or they use it to leverage other money?
They're outright grants, some of them may have been able to use it to get more money, for example, the bridal shop.
Uh-huh.
They didn't get a commitment on additional money until they, they had that.
I see.
So it worked out to advantage, because they needed a new roof. So that, that, that award of two thousand dollars helped them go to the lending institution end.
Okay.
Essentially, it's all outright grant assistance to those businesses that are making improvements. And we looked at, we tried to widen the scope, so it wasn't just from Orbis Street to Water Street. There's people around the community that are doing business in their community, that are doing a lot of work on their properties. For example, simply you and East Arbor Street, they had already rehabbed their building. But they hadn't rehabbed their, their parking area or their, their driveway entrance. You know, so they're making an investment, so we were able to help them with, with at least their, their parking and some signage and that thing.
We have, um, a request for the village to help with their core of the community project they've got, they get money from RV RDA for that, I believe.
Correct.
Um, so my thought is, if you have five thousand dollars remaining in the downtown fund, my question is, how much of a heart, heartache would that cause you guys, or would that cause the BDC and the people that, the people that are invested? Right? If we took that five and put it toward something else to go, to help the village with their core of the community?
We, we, we could, but, but we might not have five left, because like I said, we've already got requests in.
I understand you have requests of general gratitude yet, right?
We've discussed them, and we made, made a, a dollar figure for the amount that's going to be given to, not necessarily given, but, yes, I guess the word's given, given to these three.
So you, so you haven't formally committed, you haven't formally committed the money yet, but as a, but as an organization, you have an idea of where you want to spend it?
Yeah, and, and we, I accept a couple of these, it's looking very promising that you're gonna be able to get fifteen hundred dollars for this.
And if we said we're taking the five thousand somewhere else, that would be, that would cause some.
So if there's anything left, no problem, we can put it towards that core of the community. Because the core of the community program is gonna be, it's modeled after, because we're gonna be the one to administer it. It's modeled after the Main Street grant. Many of the, the parameters around it, but it's gonna be more flexible. And there's gonna be limitations on it, be a certain amount, um, I don't have it in front of me to tell you about those.
And who's setting those parameters? You guys are the village board.
What's that?
Who is setting those parameters, the BDC or the village board?
I have made, right, we, the village, or the BDC has given the village recommendations on how it should be administered.
Okay.
We've given them basically a program guide of how it should be administered, and then what are the exceptions? If somebody, I mean, the ideal thing is to have a, have, um, residential on the second floor, commercial on the first floor.
Right.
So, are my hands gonna be tied if somebody comes to me and says, I have this project, doesn't have a residential component, but it's a good project? There'll be flexibility to work around that.
Okay, okay.
Primarily, like, see residential, commercial. It's not gonna be the, and we'll do a presentation on it when it's finalized.
We have a couple instances where, and I don't wanna get too far into weeds on this, but where there's a business downtown that's functioning every day, they don't own the building they're in. So if they came to you and said, I'd like money to replace my windows, if they don't own the building, how does that work?
We'd have to probably talk to the building owner to see if they're willing to have that work done on their property. We, I wouldn't, we wouldn't give the money without permission from the building owner.
See, and, and that's one of my concerns, because a couple of the owners don't live here, they bought the thing at the tax auction. They threw a sign for rent on the window, they got a tenant. Um, I don't want our money, quite frankly, fixing up their building if they don't want to invest any money in the building. Other than buying five thousand bucks at the tax auction.
That's where you have to have the flexibility, you gotta get all the information before we just.
Alright, I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but in my mind, I don't want our, our money going for a situation like that. Because like I said, I think it's a crime when you, you live in Ottawa or somewhere, you buy a building at the tax sale for five grand, you don't even, you don't even clean the windows, you put a sign up for rent, and next thing you know, you're renting it, and they make it wherever much a month for rent, and you've invested not one dime in that building other than buying it at the tax sale.
One of the things that should help with, with some of those things is the villages adopting design guidelines that were created out of our Main Street grant program. It gives specific guidelines to what could or couldn't be done to buildings. Working on a process now, so that, if those design guidelines are in place, and the property goes to get a building permit, okay, timeout, what are you doing? What's it gonna look like? What, is it gonna be purple paint and pink paint, or is it gonna be metal or vinyl, or? Go to the guidelines, do they match the guidelines?
Okay.
There's.
So are all those restrictions in place?
Yeah, there's new anti, the village has been working on new anti-vite codes.
Understood.
To start, again, are you, is everybody in the hat? No, because you're gonna have to start enforcing.
Yeah?
But once you start enforcing them, then if you're the property owner next door, you may now be willing to invest, because I know the person next door, they now just can't put anything and everything on their building.
Right, right, okay.
So that, those, we, we provide the village with design guidelines, um, to use, not just for this program, but in general moving forward, to help tighten up some of the, the codes and the parameters that we operate with, within the, uh, within the village.
Okay, good, great, thanks. Um, one other thing that I wanted to talk about is, you saw the email from Frank, uh, from Pat Hatziski on the parking lot at the airport. That grant is good until twenty, two thousand twenty. So, if we take that out, uh, this year's budget, do you remember what that amount was?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, okay, that obviously will help somewhat. But my thought is, why don't we take that out, and use some of that money if we want to support the village effort on core of the community? So we take the fifty-seven and change, fifty-seven-five, whatever it is, out of this year's budget, and say we're gonna do that next year. I don't like kicking the can down the road, but honestly, I'd like to get that done so we don't lose the grant. I don't want to refuse the, I don't want to reject the grant, because I don't believe we're ever gonna get another one, if we reject one. Um, but I don't have a problem putting it off either, so I wanted to see what you thought about.
I'm sorry, saying twenty-five thousand this year for core of the community, then that twenty-five thousand next year would go towards the parking lot, and if we kicked it out another year, it'd be only twenty-five thousand.
Right.
So that would pay for that.
Yeah, so that's what I'm thinking. Uh, if you want to support core of the community, and I don't know a lot about it, other than what the mayor said, and do you, can you guys explain the core of the community at all?
Well, the core of the community is, is the rehab program for buildings.
Okay, so it's similar, yeah.
Similar, but it goes beyond just facades.
Okay.
It could be interior work.
Okay.
But there's gonna be, you know, it's.
That's the one you're gonna criteria for, you just said, like, okay.
So it's a maximum, I think, a maximum application is thirty thousand. So if, if it's thirty thousand, it's, you gotta have a match. It's not all grant, you have to, you have to have a match.
So the, but they have, the business has to invest as well?
They have to have some, some skin in the game to.
Yeah.
So, and again, the, the other thing with that program, I mean, so with the money the village has, that they got through the grant from the RV RDA, and the money that the village is putting in, and if you put money in it, let's say it's fully funded at, the mayor was saying it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's still, that's not a lot, a couple, three projects and you kind of max, maximize it out, four projects, you can max it out.
Right.
The, the, for my opinion is that, I don't want people to panic if it doesn't all get used it right away. Right? Because now you can build on it, and then maybe if you're, if you build on the amount.
Yeah.
Now you've got a significant fund that you can start working with, then, then potentially beyond just the grant, you could do loans.
Alright, so that's, so the, so the core of the community right now is it's designed as grant more than loan, correct?
Grant and.
Investment, right, right.
But if you can, if you can build it, so I, I'm just gonna make this up, so year one, you only expend twenty-nine thousand. You got a hundred thousand, you go back to the funding sources, and next year, and ask to fund it again.
Sure.
Now you get two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
I understand, yeah.
Now I, now you have money I can loan and, and get interest on, plus grant, plus investment.
And is there a restriction of where that money is used geographically?
We're trying to define those boundaries as we speak. I'm, I, my preference is a wider, wider boundary. Generally, programs like this, they want to narrow boundaries, so you see the results.
Right.
However, you narrow it, you're closing the, you're closing out people that I don't know yet that that's. So we're still working on the ex- the exact boundaries. It'll be bigger than the Main Street, bigger than Orbis to Water.
We, you know, we, we've thought about downtown, in my mind, it's too narrow a scope for too long. And we make, and we put a, put a big push on basically two blocks of Main Street. Um, and then you look at what's happening in East Doris, there's obviously improvements in development there, there's plenty of business on North Main Street, not plenty, there needs to be more. There's businesses on North Main, there's business on South Main, um, so, uh, I don't, I don't like to narrow focus.
So we're, as, you know, again, that program, we probably won't be really rolling it out till next year. You know, I, I've given the mayor the guidelines this month, I gave him the draft copy of it.
Okay.
He'll share it with his board, whatever comments I have, that'll come back to me. And then we'll do a, a public presentation at some point, so the public understands what the, the program is, and how we'll roll it out.
Okay, good, thanks.
I would not be in favor, um, of using fifty-seven thousand two hundred dollars would delay the DOT project, not X it out.
Right, right, I don't want, I don't want to kill it, no, I want to delay it.
We're, we're, we've got the parameters from Pat Hatziski.
Yeah.
Alright, so we know, we've got, we've got firm dates, so now we want to put some of that money back. You know, the template that Nancy used, and correctly so, was ninety thousand dollars. The effect of a ten percent increase in the tax, the taxes on a ninety thousand dollar home. There are plenty of homes in Messina that are more than that, and I'm thinking also about Coa. Okay, a ten percent increase for a ninety thousand dollar house is gonna be a heck of a lot more on a business like El Coa.
That's where it's at.
And I think a key component to you attracting the type of business that you want, and to do the things that you want, is taxes, taxation. So, I would not be in favor if, if, if we delayed the.
Parking lot.
The parking lot project, we leave that money, oh, we, we, we're reducing. We've gone from ten percent to seven percent, however, uh, we have not figured in, and Nancy brought that to our attention last week, the fact that we have a tax case that is also going to affect this budget, correct Nancy?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't want to lose sight of that.
Yeah, it's gonna be settled very soon, I hope, it's the plan. So, let me make sure I understood you, Albert, so you, you, um, wouldn't be in favor of leaving, leaving the twenty-five in for the parking lot? You want to take that out and then worry about it next year, or, or what, I wasn't clear, or you, or you don't want to do, you want to take the whole fifty-seven out?
I want the whole fifty-seven out.
Okay.
That's what you agreed at the last meeting, and so we ran, we reran the numbers. We took out the fifty-seven-two, and we took twenty thousand dollars from airport capital.
So we did take the fifty-seven out, okay.
Yes.
That's what you had said you wanted to do at the last meeting.
Twenty on the airport.
Airport improvement.
Alright, so we did that, I think we've taken it out.
Well, the consensus was as long as the thing was back far enough to catch up with it.
Right. So if we, if we were to do core of the community, we would have to actually put twenty-five back in, I guess it's.
Who's to say we gotta go twenty-five?
No, we don't, right?
We're in open position.
I agree, it could be ten, it could be five.
Seven percent increase is a big increase, in my opinion. I mean, we got, you, you still had earmarked ten thousand dollars for the, um, attorney contract that's supposed to be paid by the Messina Memorial Hospital, maybe. I would like to get rid of that too, but, but maybe that's where we put ten thousand in, in the balance of that, whatever money we have left from that other thing, if any.
So, so.
Who's to say we have to put twenty-five in?
No, we don't, no, no, I, I agree, we don't, we did that, I think before, but, um, so if we, so what you're saying is, take out the, the ten thousand, we put in extra illegal for the hospital, uh, situation, because it appears the, the hospital ended up paying our expenses in that thing. That's our plan, and I think they're agreeable to that, I haven't informed them yet, but, um, so take that ten thousand dollar out, earmark that for core of the community?
I would, I agree with Albert, I'm not putting fifty-seven-two back in, Michael, I can tell you that right.
Yeah, I don't want to put it back in. And I, and I'm not proposing putting fifty-seven back in, I thought it was still in there, I forgot where you're taking it out.
We took it out last week.
So that's, I guess I, so I guess I was saying twenty-five back in, again, that doesn't have to be it, so, there's enough to be twenty-five thousand, it could easily be tied. I don't think anybody have a problem with that, but, what do you want, what do you want to do, where do you want to take it out?
And the BDC had requested eighty-two-five, and you bumped it to eighty-five, we can use that twenty-five, plus the ten, and put that towards core of the community. If they requested eighty-two-five, is according to Tom, and you, is that, is that right? No?
No, they requested eighty-five.
Oh, they did request?
You added in an eighty-two-five.
Eighty-two-five.
We did eighty-two-five this year, this year, this year we did eighty-two-five. So I agreed to the, I agreed to the eighty-five.
Yeah, why did, why did you agree to that?
To that increase?
Yeah.
Um. Okay, so why? Uh, I think.
Especially in light of the, the village giving them fifteen thousand, where they previously.
I didn't think it was an unreasonable increase, um, and we're either gonna do it or we're not, in my opinion. We're either gonna do, fund economic development or we're not. At some point, we may have to say, hey, we've done what we can do, uh, the BDC's, or some version of, some form, that the BDC's been around for forty years, we're not doing anymore, but, um, I'm not ready to do that yet, right now, uh, we have too much other stuff going on.
I'm not either, but, but Steve is making a valid point. I think, when you, when you, the disparity between the contribution of the town and the village is great.
It's, it's significant.
It's a significant, it's a significant difference, and, and I'm not opposed to giving them that, that money, because they are showing us that they're, they're working, we've asked, it, it's difficult to quantify what you do. We know that, but there is a big disparity between the contributions. You, you know.
Well, the year before, it was the village's contribution was zero.
Here's the other thing. Before that, it was thirty thousand dollars.
You guys picked up a year ago, happy with that?
Yes.
Yeah, two years ago, we were sixty, now we're up to eighty-five.
Um.
I think, I think the village's thought process, right, Tommy can, tell me if it's different, they went after a grant writer, and they put, allocated X amount of money for a grant writer.
Yeah, they've allocated money for a grant writer, and again, it's, it's, we work very closely with that writer. We're sitting on two potentially large grants for the community that, that could come through, Restore New York Grant and another Main Street, for a single, just building. So there's, there's value in what they're doing.
Well, they're, she's also working on a grant for the trail project.
Correct. Now, would I love for the village to be giving us what they're still giving us, absolutely, you know?
So what?
However, I mean, it's, it's, the village, be it it's not, they're not, I, I, we like more money from the village. Village houses us, we have increased services from the village, not, that's not quantified. But, it's, from the grant writing perspective, there is gonna be some positive results to come out of that.
Right.
Now, we're gonna be the ones that have to administer it, right? So at some point, if, if the grant doesn't allow administrative fees for us, then something's gonna have to change. Because you, you can't administer two large grants and, and then not have the, 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 to do them.
But don't most of the grants include them?
They do, yeah, I, I have to clarify with the village.
Who gets it?
Who gets it? Are you using the administrative fee to, to help offset the cost of that, or, or is, are we gonna get it for the administration? That's, that's a conversation I have to have with the village.
Some of my other thought processes, processes in the twenty-five hundred dollars is that it's not really, it's compact money. It's not gaming compact money, it's not tax credit money. It's both, the first point of that is, it's supposed to be used for economic development. So, um, that's why I agreed to the increase.
Yeah, and then, then rather than, rather than giving, taking money out of this budget, or putting money into this budget to give to the, the downtown thing. Compact money should be used for that.
Yeah.
Not, not the operating budget of the town in Messina.
Right, and.
But if we commit compact money, all the compact money to, to the different things that are going on, then we aren't gonna have any money to give.
That's right, and we're at that point.
And I don't, and I'm against taking it out of this operating budget, I don't care what it is.
So you want to cut the, you want to cut the BDC by the twenty-five hundred, go back to eighty-five?
I'm not saying that, but I'm talking in general.
I understand.
I'm talking mainly about the seventy-seven thousand two hundred dollars that we took from the budget last meeting.
What I'm saying, you want to add to that, you can do that by taking the.
I don't want to make a decision on that right now, I just, we just received an email today on core of the community.
That's right.
Tomorrow, you guys are giving a presentation, I believe, it's under your agenda for core of the community, we're gonna have a discussion tomorrow. Okay.
Alright, so. I'm sorry, we have to decide tonight, not tomorrow.
Yeah, I would delay, because we, we just received one email, we don't know what, you know, other than what was in the email, we don't know what, what it takes, what they're talking about.
Yeah, and I can ask them to argue the guidelines.
The one, the one I sent last week, do they have guidelines in it, or?
We just got it dropped today, actually.
Yeah, today we got it.
Yeah, but, but I, the one I sent, the original request from the mayor, did it have?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so, you just put FYI on it.
Yeah, I don't remember if, I thought, I don't think it was.
Yeah, that original one was, was the, the initial framework, the initial ideas that you, that you all probably had, to go to, to the mayor, to the board.
I'm not saying, I think it's a great program, I just.
Great.
I'd like a little meeting while we're here about it.
We're here.
Right here?
Four thirty.
Okay, you know, one other thing, I, I just thought about the meeting, if three town councilmen go to a meeting, that's not a quorum.
Well, then I'll go.
But I'm saying, yeah, I mean, so if both of the liaisons are there and you still want to go, that's not gonna be a problem.
It's a, a public meeting, it's not announced.
Right, you're not there, you're not there to discuss town business, you're there to listen to what the BDC has to say. So you're welcome to go, sir. Alright, anything else on the budget for right now? We're gonna have to meet again next week.
Bob's not having.
Well, I, and honestly, we're honestly, we, we can delay decisions, but at some point, we gotta make them, right?
I know, when I went to see the information today, and the format of it, right?
Yeah, on the core of the community, right, so if you don't want to fund that, well, okay, we'll wait. I just, I was hoping, I'm hoping it some year, we can avoid however many four or five budget meetings, but if we can't.
Why don't we move on to the regular meeting, and then we'll come back up onto the budget meeting?
We're gonna come back, sir, as soon as I can stand up for the budget.
So you're good, you have something else for me?
Okay, we're all set, thank you, Tyler, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Well, thank you very much.
You coming to later? You coming to one?
Okay. Well, uh, have to play the allegiance, play the allegiance.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic of which is saying, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, thank you. Welcome, everybody, for those who came just for the meeting, appreciate your patience as we do some budget work. I'm gonna close up the budget book, like, remember the friendly giant, oh, he opened the book, I guess, I'm closing it. I'm not the friendly giant either, I'm not. Anybody remember the friendly giant?
I do.
Okay. We have a fifteen minute public comment period. Anyone, uh, any, anyone to make any comments? Okay, we'll have another comment period at the end, so if you have something to say, hold on to it. Um, we've got, first up, a resolution to accept the minutes for, um, March sixteen and April twenty, with addition of a code change, and awaiting an attorney's wording, and also five eighteen and six fifteen. The motion is second.
Second.
And a second, uh, any discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, extension, motion carries. Okay, we have a resolution to reimburse Hazel Rousseau for water line repairs to the responsibility of the water district. Uh, we've had a discussion, um, with the attorney about this, there's a problem with a lateral to her home, and, uh, she had to hire a private contractor to do that, and the question is, the amount, um, the amount that I had figured was seven hundred and fifty dollars. I want to see what you thought about that. She actually, was actually more than that, but I don't think it filled our responsibility, so that's a figure that I was using. If anyone, is, is anyone still moved, I accept a, a resolution to do that, motion to do that.
Motion moved.
Second.
Motion on the second. Any discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, extension, motion carries. Next up, uh, do the assessments report, Mike Ward is here to give us a report.
This doesn't look like a lot, but it really sounds a lot.
You wasted paper, here, I got two.
You got two? You're gonna have to listen twice then.
Nancy gives you that look, you know. Um, yeah. What I did was, I, I went over and I talked to the county, talked, talked to county director. I took, we took a look at Messina.
Mike, why don't you, I, I have you stand here so you make sure that the cameras got you.
Really?
Yeah, you should have pounded your head, but we'll worry about that later.
Okay.
At the stadium, over here, whatever, just so.
Well, it, it, Messina's got a unique situation here because we have a lot of people talking about how there are seven hundred houses for sale in Messina, and there is, uh, every house is selling for less, and that's absolutely not true. And so I contacted MLS, and, uh, in the town of Messina, there's two hundred and eighteen houses for sale.
Current, today?
Today. Single family homes, there's three thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven houses in Messina. So the percentage is actually small when it comes right down to it. And that sheet I gave you, that sheet I gave you gives you the number of sales over the last three years, there's three hundred, uh, three hundred and fifty-eight sales. Now, those sales do, do not include estates, they don't include foreclosures, they don't include, uh, if Nancy sold her house to her cousin, that, they, these are arms-length transactions. And this is what the state would use to do our equalization rate. So when you look at all of that, and you look at all of our neighborhoods, this is a calculation done right off the RPS system, and the, um, uh, weighted mean ratio is, is basically ninety-seven percent. So that's where we're at, we're at ninety-seven percent, that's a really good thing.
What's that mean, weighted mean ratio?
Well, it's our, it's, it's, it's basically, uh, are we at a hundred percent of value, we're not at, quite at a hundred percent, we're about, we're at ninety-seven. So the state of New York, the state of New York is gonna give us a hundred percent, um, because we're, we're above ninety-five percent. So.
Well, so.
You know, all we have to do is stay above ninety-five percent and we're at a hundred percent.
Okay.
And being at a hundred percent is, is really important because it low, it gives a homeowner the, the most, the maximum that they can get on their star exemption. It also, uh, uh, decreases their tax bill, on their school tax bill, um, in other ways, so if, I deal with other towns, I see what their tax rates are, you know, or I see what their, their school tax rate is, and a lot of it is, and some of that is based on the equalization rate, so being at a hundred percent is good. It also means that we don't have to have any big projects like a revaluation. Because a revaluation is very expensive, and Albert can tell you, if you've ever been through a revaluation, you're gonna get calls constantly.
It's not a phone.
It, it, it's, and it's getting worse, it's getting worse, just because of the nature of taxes in New York State. So, basically, that ninety-six, point ninety-six, or I say ninety-seven, is a really good indicator. Now, the COD, that other number, that's not quite as strong, that means that we have some inequity. And inequity means, um, there are some houses that are valued or assessed too low, or they may be assessed too high compared to their neighbors, okay? And, um, so there's some inequity, and when I went through the neighborhoods, that inequity exists mostly in the town outside, not in the village. In fact, most of our village neighborhoods came in very strong, very, you know, very strong as far as that figure went. So, the town outside has some, has some small issues, but not enough that this board needs to go out and, and, uh, tell me that, that I have to do a revaluation, so we're, and, and the state is not gonna pay us to do a revaluation anymore anyway, so there, there's no really good reason to do it.
So, would you, that doesn't, nothing precludes you from going into those places where you, where you're seeing inequities and making the adjustment?
That's exactly right, and, and that's what I've been doing, so I've been juggling, if I see something, uh, sale prices are a good, good way to do it, because I get everybody in my office who bought a house for less. And a lot of these, a lot of these sales that people coming in are foreclosures, we've had quite a few foreclosures, it's full unusual. But, uh, maybe that's the sign of the times, but.
And any with the numbers, you haven't had that with the foreclosures?
I, I do not, no, but I could probably get you a figure on that. But, those, they're not arms-length transactions, so we can't really look at them as, as, uh, as a real sale, and people don't really understand that. I don't get anybody who comes in and says, I paid too much for the house, and well, you raise your assessment, I haven't had anybody like that. I don't understand why. Um, but, uh, so basically, our, this is a good grade. If you look at the sheet, Messina's in very good shape as far as, as far as, uh, what we have to do for this next year. So we don't have to do any major projects, so my suggestion, and Darren Colton's suggestion, who is the, who's the county director, is to, um, is to leave things alone, uh, juggle assessments as, as, you know, as warranted. Uh, people who have been coming in, uh, probably ninety-nine percent of the people who have been coming in, who bought houses on foreclosure, uh, I have been sending those, those people on to grievance, I, I haven't, I haven't done anything, I've explained to them how the grievance process works, let them go in front of the board of review, and let, let them make a call. So, so basically, my assessment report is that, is right now, the town of Messina's in pretty good shape as far as the state is concerned.
How much new construction in the past year?
Oh, we haven't had a lot. There's a young gentleman here right now who's helped us a little bit, Mr. Lemay, and, uh, Vance Fleury's also helped us, we've had a couple new houses down in Vance's neighborhood. Uh, we have.
Do you have a figure on that, new construction?
I, I, I don't, I don't, but, uh, uh, there was one house that was well over two hundred thousand, and there was another one about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Plus, we're gonna have a new one, we have another one coming this year that probably will be around a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Uh, most of the things I'm getting are garages and additions right now.
The tax sale is one of the things I, I wanted to ask about, so this, the building on the end of the strip across the street, which is, used to house the computers, sort of, houses, it's had to business. That property was, I don't know what the assessment is there, but the assessment is X, so it sells at tax sale for five thousand bucks. Do we leave the assessment where it was?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
I don't change those.
And if that person comes in and says, hey, I only paid five thousand, then you send them the grievance.
They're quick claim deeds, and, and they don't reflect market value at all, so we, we do not, uh, Homecroft, surprisingly, is, is very good. Uh, Homecroft came in right around ninety-eight, you know, we're right around ninety-eight percent of where the value should be, so we're not over.
There's been some houses that have sold for pretty good money, I thought, in Homecroft.
Yes, yeah, we've had a couple that are, a couple that have sold for lower than they should be, and I don't know why this.
There were some that sold for, I, I don't wanna say it sold for, but more than I thought they would sell for.
Right.
Didn't that house with the columns and Jefferson sell for ninety?
Yeah, I think, I think that's one of the higher values, it's a bit down there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But generally, like, some of the ones that are up on Begin's area, I mean, they seem to be going lower.
That's, that's a different town, so fortunately.
Well, I mean, within, Begin's built, yeah.
Well, some in, in, sample, they were within Rosebrier, down in, but the Zanco development, so those were sold cheaply as well.
Some, yeah, but some of those were, were company homes that they dumped, and, uh, so we don't consider those values as accurate values.
Yeah, but I mean, they, they've done that, a lot of, uh, people that have moved out, but generally speaking, is there a way to track the pricing up there, I mean, would it seem to be lower?
Uh, that, that neighborhood was, wasn't too bad, I looked at that neighborhood. It included, it also included Mortgage Hill, so it didn't specifically just take that. That, we have, we have a lot of neighborhoods in Messina that, the way it was broken up when they did the original, uh, revaluation in Messina, which was back in, I think, the eighties or early nineties, they, 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 you break the, the town up into neighborhoods, and Homecroft is its own neighborhood. Mortgage Hill includes Riverside Parkway in that area. Um, and that neighborhood, that whole neighborhood of Riverside Parkway, and Mortgage Hill, Nightingale, and all those streets up there, they're pretty good. Their numbers were pretty good. The only numbers where I saw possibly some improvement were town outside.
Well, yeah, we saw that in the budget, um, uh, there's been changes, um, in the, in the village, in village, uh, has gone down, and, uh, town is, outside has increased, actually.
But, you know, I like to get the word out to people, you know, especially because I hear it all the time in my office when these people come in, is there seven hundred houses for sale in Messina, there, there's not seven hundred houses for sale in Messina, and we have sales. We have constant, constant deeds that we're constantly picking up, you can ask Taya, Taya's key in them, so.
Do you know how that would compare with Augsburg or Potsdam or Canton?
Yeah, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna get you that information, I didn't have a chance to get it, but I'm gonna see how we do, I know, uh, Potsdam is very busy, I think Potsdam market is, uh, they have an issue with, with, uh, values going up. Our trend is, according to the state, we're at a, we're at a flat line, we're at a zero percent trend. But I think Potsdam is two percent or something.
Potsdam and Canton, don't those four colleges own a tremendous amount of property in North Towns?
Yeah, they don't pay taxes on.
No.
No. Saint Lawrence, a couple of years ago, volunteered to pay taxes on certain properties, but Clarkson has never, has never agreed to pay taxes on anything.
Yeah, Saint Lawrence is a, basically, base a pilot, I think what Clarkson has done in the past is purchased, you know, fire truck or whatever, different things like that, but. So, when we look at the decrease in village assessment, which is significant, one point four million dollars, is that, um?
I think that's legal, I think.
The surgeries, the, the assessment challenges?
Yep.
Their total assessment's down at a million dollars.
With the one sale in my report, the highest sale price, a little over two million, it's on this.
Yeah, I see that.
Sheet.
Two point three.
That was writing, that was.
Okay.
Walgreen buying writing.
Okay, any questions?
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike, yeah, you bet.
Thank you. Next up, uh, we have, uh, oops, I got, I gotta put this away. Um, okay, Scott Lemay would like to talk to us about, uh, a road he would like the town to, he'd like to dedicate to the town for us to take it over. Scott, let's, too yet to say.
Robert's drawing here, just one. That shows the, uh, road that we wanted to turn over. Everything about it, elevations, the water, and everything that's required.
How long is it?
As far as I know, well, around seven hundred fifty feet, roughly.
And what do we know about how it was built, Frank?
Just with my conversations with Scott, but there's no core samples or?
Yeah, we haven't done any core samples yet, uh, we have, uh, finished grading to do, complete on one side of the road, one ditch, and we have not done signage, we have not done the top soil of the ditches yet, we have not done core samples yet. Frank mentioned, you know, you probably wanna wait and take your thoughts on it, probably go ahead and do the core samples and all that. We followed the standard specifications, you know, to build the road. Built the town specs and.
How old is it?
Couple months.
Oh, so it's branded, okay.
Yeah, it's black topped it, yep.
Have we taken, is there another one up there, do you have this one road up there?
Yeah, just the one.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have it up there a while.
Frank.
Yeah, I'm, go ahead.
I, I believe, Scott, you were here before, we were talking.
We were here for a subdivision there.
Right. Turnarounds.
I haven't been up there, we asked about having a turnaround road there.
Yeah, we have the hammerhead, the hammerhead tee turnaround, the top of the hill there. And I own, uh, six parts of the property here. My apartment sit on, uh, two properties joined, my house is on there, it's quite, it's quite a mess, actually, because we're not able to subdivide any of the properties. You know, and that's, that's been a hinder of future development also, so.
So your house is up there, how many, how many apartment units?
We have twenty open right now, we have eight under construction right now, eight units, in my house.
So you've got twenty that are, that are occupied, you've got eight in, in the works.
Eight hundred destruction, yep.
You're just talking road, you're not talking water, sewer, taking it over?
Um, I put the water sewer in the right of way, in the sixty-six foot right of way, above, just up the town of Messina Road, so.
I guess we'd have to, I would think somebody, we'd have to have someone look at the water line, that was installed, it meets, obviously, the village.
Yeah, I was in constant communication with Haas, Faye, and everybody throughout the whole project, the sewer system, the water system, you know, everything.
Still think we need to have some conversation with them.
Yep.
So there's a water line and sewer in the right of way?
Yep.
And so that comes with it, Frank?
That's why, that's why I asked the question, I think, that's what he's assuming, that we would take over water and sewer.
Yep, it's within the right of way.
Okay.
You plan on building more buildings? Yep, and, uh, it's a water line and a sewer, a capacity for those as well.
Yes.
How many, how many units do you think I'll end up with?
Well, we have a hundred acres land, so I don't think we'll run out of land anytime soon.
Okay.
Business is good, we have good demand, we're gonna keep building.
What, typically, what's a unit, size-wise, how many bed?
Uh, right now, we're doing twelve hundred square foot units.
Okay, and those have how many bedrooms?
It's two bed and two bath, ground floor, laundry room, all plants included.
What are they right for?
Eight hundred month, these are duplexes.
Joe, we could talk about this all night, probably. Uh, I don't think there's a reason for us to talk about it, in my opinion, without Haas's, uh, evaluation of the water line and sewer, and until whatever Frank says we need with the core, and everything else that has to be done, before we even think about taking this over.
I don't think you were looking for an answer tonight, Ford.
Well, I had questions, at the top of the, you know, if you were gonna take it over, at the top of the turnaround, how much land do you need, and, uh, questions on the survey, if you need to turn it over, you know. I don't know how much, never done this before, so.
I would like to see core samples, I, I agree with that part, just so we know what's under that.
What do we, uh, can we get an approval contingent upon meeting all the specifications, is that for?
Or, I, I, I would like to, I don't think we can do anything until Frank has got to meet with Haas and.
Well, we gotta talk to Haas, I, I just wanna make sure the water line, I don't know.
Yeah.
I would assume that we would need a letter from you.
Is that in the water district?
Core samples are gonna be his cost, so before you tell him to put core samples, you better make sure we're, we're telling him what to do.
I'm concerned with the water and the sewer.
Yeah. What's that?
To make sure, what you're concerned about.
We're not in the water business, my God.
That's right, yep, so you guys know real much about it, I understand.
Mike, are those in the water district?
Yeah.
How does it get billed, the water, is it in our town water district?
Yes.
Okay, so you're part of the town water district?
Yeah, I, I pay water bill every month for all the apartments.
So you've got one meter for all the apartments?
I've got three meters for all of them.
Okay, so three separate, okay.
That doesn't mean it's in a water district.
No, we'd have to, we'd have to, we'd have to amend the district to bring it in.
Right now, we're responsible for, for all those lines, right?
Right.
It's all private.
It's all his, it's all his, yeah.
I'll give you my concern, my concern is, these budgets get harder and harder over here. All right, you, you cut my chip's budget by fifty-one thousand dollars this year, so I'm going to pay, do a rehab of one of our roads. All right, you, you cut my chip's budget by fifty-one thousand dollars this year, so I'm going to pay, do a rehab of one of our roads and I'm going to do a patch on one of our other roads. So I've got eleven roads out there that are due for something to be rehabbed. And if we continually cut the chip's budget. I'm not going to, you know, I, I, I don't think the town should be taking over to me. That's my opinion. Because if I don't have money to take care of what we got and what we keep adding to it, where's the money coming from? Because I keep hearing this, you know, we keep talking about compact money, the money's less. We're using it for more. A lot of time, most of the time, that money goes towards road and building, right?
Right.
So I think we need to think long and hard. On what we do here. You know, keep taking over more asphalt. But how are you gonna pay for it? Because when we push roads back, that just means. It, there, you know, the roads that have been paved nine years ago and another year they're coming through again. So we need to do our homework.
I'm, I'm not asking you to take over a road for vacant land that doesn't generate taxes. My property generates funds and tons of taxes. Taxes are increasing every year.
I think that we should take over as many roads as we can because you're getting assessed here.
So we're gonna have to make decisions about if a town will not take care of, and not take care of.
No, and I, I agree. I think that we ought to take care of the roads. You know, three years ago, two years ago, we were redoing three miles. This year we're down to one point nine. You know, it's, it's getting less and I don't think that's good. It's not good for the community. I think that we've gotta find the money somewhere.
Reality is reality. When we were, when we were doing that many roads, we had compact money. And it was going up every year. Now it's going down. And where are you going to find the money?
Well, he's building as fast as he can. We're getting assessed value out of that.
What is the assessment? Do you know what I'm saying?
Uh, I just added a praise before these, I don't know about the assessment, but I don't know, Mike probably knows more.
I think he's close to four hundred now.
For all the units?
Yeah, it's fully assessed at this time or?
It's not, not, not including what, what he's just done.
Yeah, the new, uh, the new eight aren't to full assessment?
No.
You know, I think that's a, a common fault for a lot of communities. They back off on that. I mean, even look at the county. I mean, they're shutting bridges faster than.
So we're gonna have an increase real quick, another, another five hundred thousand by the time, you know, top real.
Yeah, I think we should be developing that.
Yeah, and then we're looking at, you know, next year's project, you know, they said, you know, as long as everything goes smooth. The road, the road has a big impact on my future plans to.
You know, if you look at, um, Rivercrest, you know, how many, what's that, twelve million dollar assessed value down there?
It's a significant average.
I mean, it's, um. If they, we hadn't taken over the town and decided to cut back on what we take, that wouldn't have been developed. You can only have so many houses on dirt roads.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, Steve, but so we need to raise taxes to be able to provide the additional services. And that's, you know, I didn't.
That's not one, that's not an area I think we should cut.
That's fine. So that's what I'm saying. So we, we need to make. We need to decide if, if, if we're headed down to, try to get down to like one or two percent tax increase this year, which I'm concerned about, then. We're on a fool's errand in my mind.
We can't get that low.
I know.
Except for the fifty seven.
But we're still, we're down to seven percent.
Nobody's proposed any cuts at all.
No, I, I would agree, but I, but I think we're. I believe there are people, members of the board who would like to trip away at that. To get lower than seven. Tom said earlier, you thought seven's too high. We haven't had an increase, significant increase in a while, um, and all these obligations continue.
We, we order ourselves to make sure the water line and sewer is, is, I don't know anything about it, wasn't involved in that.
Yep.
So we need.
I agree. I think we need to at least.
Yeah, but that's something that you can take care of. And then sure, if Scott has to pay for it to verify, I'm not against that. Same thing with the core sample. But he's our engineer, town engineer, or guy that's gonna verify that everything is right. And then once you do that, let us know, write us a letter and we'll take the road. Or I would vote to take over. I don't know what the other.
Who installed your waters or?
I did, yeah.
And that's all the specifications?
I literally was in the ditch with the laser shooting the steps. Because I wanted to ensure that there's no reason why this road would be denied.
Was there soil samples taken as well?
Nope.
So you don't know the corrosion factor of the soil at all? You don't, was it, what type of pipe was it?
Uh, we got eight, eight inch HDP sewer line, six inch iron ductile water mix, you know, standard. Got manholes every two hundred feet, you know.
Ductile water main might be a problem issue though, I mean, if this, if this all is corroded.
And that, did you cover it?
It's, uh, six inch iron ductile, it's new.
Plastic coated or no, or?
It needs, uh, Mr. Ha's and Faya's specifications. Everything I've done meets specifications, so.
Here's what we're finding, Scott, in some parts of the town where we've installed ductile iron, which should have lasted forty years, fifty years.
Yep.
It's corroding because of the makeup, chemical makeup of the soil.
Right.
There's a reaction with the iron, so, um, some parts of the town we've done with a, uh, polyethylene sleeve, with the pipes to protect it, to prevent that kind of stuff. Um, so I think what you're, what you're asking is that some, we're learning, we're learning from past mistakes.
That's where I was heading. Yeah, we wanted to run the HDP plastic water line, but it wouldn't, I wouldn't accept that.
Yeah, I know the voters doesn't want that, so. Yeah, they have concerns about plastic, but.
Hey, I'll get with Ha and Steve then.
Okay.
So we'll put this on the agenda for again, for, again for next month then.
Okay, and when I come in, what should I be prepared to do?
Well, we need to see the core samples and, and Frank's gonna talk with, uh. Ha about the village, about the, about the water and sewer line there.
Okay, so you'd like some core samples prior to next month?
Yeah.
Well, I'd have some. I think you should come up with the criteria of what he needs.
Contact line testing.
And.
Before you go to an expense, the other question is, you're looking at a million dollar assessment roughly you're talking? I mean, is it, you're kinda guessing at?
Yeah, it's continually rising.
And then it's, um, a road's typically ten years at possible, right, resurface, so. You're looking at ten million dollars in assessment over that period to, to resurface, right? Um, I guess that's really all I have, but I'm, you should go to an expense before we know where we're heading. That's, that's the only thing.
What kind of a timeframe does this process take?
What's that?
If you decide to accept the road, the timeframe for just to?
I don't know, I've never done one. I have to have a span.
I think it's, effectively the date of the meeting, I would have added it, right?
I don't know.
We set that, I think you did, Scott.
Gotta be added to your inventory.
Oh, I understand that, but I'm saying we.
Never done it.
You have to deed it over to the town.
Yeah.
My understanding is I have a surveyor do a legal description and a map of the property, eating it to you guys, that's, you know, on my end of it.
I, I highly doubt that. I'm sure that you're going to have to have an attorney to. Write up the deed and, I mean, there's an abstract that would be.
Yeah, the surveyors usually do the legal descriptions.
Well, it's not gonna be a survey. You're gonna be the lawyer.
Yeah.
I have lawyers, it's not a problem, but I'm saying that the surveyors.
I would talk to the lawyer and ask him what he thinks the time is.
Justice is my attorney. Do I have to use a different attorney?
I don't know.
Maybe a conflict.
I would have to, I would think so.
I mean, I think.
We're not gonna happen in a month.
Anyway, it kind of costs you some more money too, I think, you know?
Yep.
Like it or not, I don't like, I don't like.
I hate prolonging it. I hate having an expense to it, but, you know, we've got to, um.
Was your answer, or was your question answered as far as the land for, for pregnant? I'm not sure if that was answered or not, or what was your question?
He wants to know how much we need for turnaround, what space we need.
Okay.
For turnaround. We can propose that.
Yep, okay. All right, okay, thanks, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up we have, uh, extension of the state's no nice agreement for the twenty, the sixteen seventeen season.
Sure.
Motion is there a second? Motion and a second, uh, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries. Up there in the Big Brass Flow, uh, I haven't seen, have I seen the final numbers on that, Nancy? As far as money? We had a total of fourteen votes.
Twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry, twelve, that's right, twelve. I didn't say fourteen. Twelve votes, which is not to twenty-four anglers, two per boat. Um, some from Montreal, some from Ottawa. Bob came out, took some great pictures. The winner, uh, had a twenty-two pound dang, I think, twenty-one something, which is pretty good. He caught a six and a quarter pound bass, which is a pretty good sized bass. He was pretty pleased with that. Um, and he won both the, the longer prize and the, uh, and the, um, the overall prize. So he got three thousand dollars. We took, took in fourteen. Well, we had, because there was a payout schedule, uh, because of the number of anglers we had, we actually had a third place. Probably a second and a third place prize as well. So, um, I didn't bring those numbers with me.
So he took in eighteen hundred.
Yep, we paid out.
He paid out. Plus.
Yep.
What?
He did one, yes.
Well, the three thousand initial prize.
Three thousand.
And then we paid out, uh, was it five hundred and? No, it was, it was three hundred and one fifty maybe? When I, I brought in, was it eighteen hundred? Yeah, but then we took out the second and third prize.
Subtracted out five hundred dollars maybe?
I think, oh, well, the final figure of the amount of money cash I had was, what, thirteen hundred?
And then, um, so it was like thirty-four fifty minus eighteen hundred dollars, which he took in.
We did a break even, it's a short answer. The, uh, the break even point I think was, uh, twenty, uh, was it twenty votes? Actually. Yeah, forty people, it would have been twenty votes, forty anglers. But. Uh, people seemed very pleased with the tournament. They encouraged, they said they would be happy to compete again. I think we should look at, we have money in promotional budget again. So when the time comes, uh, I think we gotta give it a shot. Steve was out there with his grandkids and saw their way in.
They, everybody seemed to be having a lot of fun. They were, what, two boats from Canada?
Yep.
So I think that there's room for improvement there.
Yep.
Um, and the, the biggest thing is all the fish lived.
Yep.
They brought them in in live bags and weighed them and they had a separate tub.
Yep.
To rejuvenate them.
Thanks to the, my, my guy in the San Luis River Walleye Association, they, they were there, they volunteered. Uh, I was there, I'll have you know, at five ten in the morning, that morning.
Did you know there were two five tens in a day?
It was dark, I know it was dark and cold. I don't like to see the AM when they're out. So I probably ain't gonna repeat that on a regular basis. I heard there was a two in the day. I don't see it very often. But, um, yeah, it was, it was neat that Meisner, Don Meisner was there. He obviously helped a bunch. Uh, but, but my guy brought the big tank and put the fish in and they had to fizz them. And I'm not sure how you fizz a fish. I didn't go over to see that, but because they put.
A needle in, stick a needle.
Oh, so let, yeah.
Let the air out.
Right, because a lot of the fish, because the.
When they pull them up so fast.
Because they were in deep water, because the water was warm, so they were down deep, that's where they found them. So they bring them up so the fish can get beds like people can. So they have to let the air out and.
So if he had two boats from, one from Ontario, one from Montreal?
Yeah.
Oh, and one from Ottawa, one from Montreal, is that what you said?
Yeah, yeah.
And the ten boats were local people?
Yes. Well, not just two local, one was from Alex Bay. I mean, not just Messina local, but certainly in the, the two counties, three counties. There's one from Malone, I believe as well.
So should we get Meisner to go to two shows in Ottawa and Montreal too?
Well, something to look at.
I mean, again, we gotta start quantifying things, so we registered twelve boats. We only registered two really from Alex Bay. That's it. We didn't register from any, anywhere on the other shows that he went to.
No, no, from long distance though, except we, the guy who set the whole thing up.
Right, that's where, that's where I thought we were headed because he set it up from, where was it?
He's from Western Mass.
Western, yeah, Boston, yeah.
Oh, no, further west, but closer to New York, uh, Springfield area, I think, but that's, yeah, maybe Springfield. Yeah, he's, he's near Springfield. Um, so.
I think, I think, did Don do a spreadsheet on this? Did he do a report on this?
We, we do have the, um, we get Dave, uh, we have all the forms, we have all the paper forms. Uh, we have to put those together, we can, but we have all the registration forms, um, as well as the prizes and payout, who got what. Uh, if they had that all filled out for us, I should have brought it with me, I didn't, so. Um, but yeah, it, it, was it far and wide? No. Uh, Dave Morris said, who set the whole thing up, the gentleman from Mass says, you know, his goal was twenty boats for first tournament. And he's been doing, he's been organizing tournaments for ten or fifteen years. Uh, we didn't quite make his goal, but he was pleased. And he said it takes time to build them up, right? The interest, a lot of people liked the fact that it was later, sort of after the regular tournament season. Uh, we also ran up against the first day of, of waterfowl hunting, the season for waterfowl opened that morning. Um, so somebody said, well, maybe we should change the date. The consensus was keep the same weekend, which is Columbus Day weekend because it's a long weekend.
Canadian Thanksgiving.
Right, and then people are gonna need to decide if they're gonna go hunt or go fish. But, um, one team from Canada is, is a couple, a man and a woman, I don't know if they're husband and wife, I didn't ask obviously. And she says, I don't like to fish with them, I wanna fish with someone else. Apparently they work together and they live together. If we're together too much, so we'd rather fish with other people, so it, and it was just, she, and she says. Well, I didn't, I could have brought more teams, but I didn't know if I should have. I said, my God, yeah, you should have. She said, well, next year I'll bring more teams. I said, okay. But apparently the word got out, um, uh, we had to fly, you know, Don Meisner went to a whole bunch of different exhibits, went to other tournaments. Distributed flyers. Chris Flynn from Potsdam, which I gotta thank him too, did a lot of work on the thing. Uh, he distributed flyers to different shows he was at, different tournaments that he was at, rather, so. Anyway, I, I consider it a success. Didn't meet our initial projections, but I was pretty pleased with it, so. Uh, transfers and amendments. Do we have a motion on those? Make the, in the packet there, uh. Or in the total, um, transfers. From, uh, contingency AC to justice contractual, that's for twenty-eight hundred dollars, six thousand dollars from fund AC, front balance AC. To museum contractual, uh, forty-seven point, uh, forty-seven dollars and twelve cents for contingency AC's unemployment insurance. There's amendments. Um, if any, if the media or anybody wants to list them, they're all here. I'm not gonna read them all. And we have to correct one error on a budget transfer. I need a motion to approve those.
So.
Through a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh. Then we have warrant, pay the bills.
So move.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Yeah, financial reports as always. Um, for revenue expense report for September and the year-to-date fund summary. Uh, we also have the compact, compact fund summary in there as well. Um, no, that's, I'm looking at the budget, no, that's right, I'm in the right place, nevermind. Uh, we have a public hearing next week for to, the tax act override. Eric Gusserson is drafting a local law for that. And the next regular, Tom Portman is in the sixty. We have some committee reports to do too. We haven't done those in a while.
Can I just come by, Scott, for one question? You said length of that road was seven hundred feet?
Around seven fifty, approximately.
And you know offhand roughly what it costs to pave that?
Uh, fifty thousand. That was for the complete.
Base.
All the course.
Yep, and then not go.
So it's got course binder and a finish coat on it as well?
Yep. And it's already painted, lined, yep. It looks nice. I went up there.
On the tax cap, just for clarification for everyone, um. This rate, this year's tax cap is zero point seven three percent.
Less than one percent, that's right.
And then next year's, two thousand seventeen, is zero point six eight percent.
This year is zero point six eight.
Uh, that's what I had on the association, two thousand seven three, it's six eight.
No. Zero six eight, zero zero six eight.
Don't get me going again, Sam.
Some year it might be in the. Some year it might be in the negative.
It might be, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's possible. Okay.
Can I just, um, mention, in the tentative budget that we submitted, there was a two cent error in the re-levees for the East Messina Water District and the, uh, South Main Street, uh, excuse me, Bucktown Sewer District, that we had, we just had to take two percent, two cents from one line and put it in the other. Um, so I just wanted to mention that, so that we're, because every time we change the original, we have to get approval for it.
Oh, I see what you're saying, because we changed the originals to affect it.
So we're gonna just make that correction.
Okay.
Um, I wondered if you, uh, I wanted to remind you about the CNS consult.
Oh, that's right, that was on the agenda, or something, I forgot. Um, the, our contract is expiring for airport engineers with CNS, um, and I, we need to, um, did I send out that email for? There was, the terms wouldn't change, we're already paying them, we would just continue with, do you remember how long that was, Nancy?
We did a five year, and we really don't pay them anything unless.
Right.
Uh, they're involved in a project and they have to bid the project and supply us with an engineering agreement. So it's not like we pay them a retainer or anything like that.
And they typically get a percentage of the projects that they, if you get grants from the FAA. If they're doing work for us, on like the waterline work they did, or the town bar and stuff, let me pay them for that work.
You have to have one in order to receive FAA grants.
Yeah, the FAA wants to know who it's, who it's gonna be.
And FAA will be asking because of how the contracts are.
So do you want to think action on that tonight, and they, can they have renewed the contract?
I make a motion that the contract be renewed with CNS engineers.
Four or five years again?
Five years again.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion in the second to renew, uh, to have CNS engineering continue as our engineer at the airport. Any discussion on that? All is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, extension, motion carries, very good, thank you. Uh, okay. Community reports, airport and highway, Frank, anything you need to know about?
Airport and highway, just getting ready for the winter. The airport, uh, obviously we got our marking project done, so we closed out the FAA audit from two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen, we've completed all our deficiencies.
So the stampings, the markings are all done? Good, good.
We do have an ongoing issue with the taxiway lights, um, we've had SNL. These lights were installed twenty years ago, so basically most of the wiring is buried underground. There was about eight pots that we could open up, found some bad connections, but we still have an issue with the lights. That project's two years away, uh, to replace those lights. So at some point, uh, we may have to start digging up cables ourselves to replace them. So, just so everybody's aware of that problem, it's a project, but it's not to two thousand eighteen.
It is in the capital improvement plan.
The, the, basically the design is next, this is two thousand seventeen. Uh, library, um, the controls are in place for the heating and cooling, um, they're up and running. Elaine, uh, there's a train in that needs to take place, but she's got some, she's out of the town, and I don't know her schedule with, so she wants a couple of her people to be trained along with it, so she's, I left that with her to set that up. So she's gone, I think, for the next couple of weeks, probably won't happen until sometime in November. Uh, system is up and running, uh, we had one more issue, um, we found, uh, they had the cooler shut off and, uh, she preheated coil, had a leak in it, and we brought train in on Monday and there was a copper fitting that had, basically corroded, we raised that and it's back running. So, uh, that is the only piece of equipment we have in the town right now that does not have a service contract. And the last time, I think it was probably opened up, there's a sign, there's some guy signed it two thousand seven, was here, from train. So, I really think we had to look at a service contract for that area.
Well, we should do it now, or we're doing the budget, so get back to us with it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll call and get one.
That's cool, yeah. Now, you totally screwed up my agenda, but blowed right from library up, I was about to rescue squad. Anything on the rescue squad, or is that what?
Yeah, neither Tom nor I were able to.
Okay.
I, I met the next morning with him, though, and we talked about parking lot project, and we talked about a few, few things, and I have some info on that parking lot project, and Frank, immediately, I called him and he took care of it within a couple hours. And in that budget, they budgeted forty-five thousand for paving the parking lot, and I wouldn't recommend that we do that at all. If anything, I got, I gave you guys the sheets last week, if anything, I would recommend sealing it, crack, filling the cracks, and spraying it. And in that quote, it also counts as repainting it for six thousand, or just hold it off and then budget down, you know, not do anything and budget it in two years or next year, Frank said it's getting pretty right.
Well, I think if you crack, fill the cracks and seal it, you probably get a couple more years out of it.
They didn't have that in the budget from there, they had said if there were money available, that they'd like to spend forty-five thousand.
Well, Roger has, says there is money there already, in the, in this year's budget, or is it budget for next year?
Probably in some of the savings accounts that he's.
Swirled away?
Set aside.
Um, so, all right, we'll talk more about that, we'll do the budget next week, so.
Okay.
It's a better idea, but I appreciate you looking into that.
Can I just mention that their new president called today, um, and wanted to know, um, I wasn't, I think it was when I was at lunch, and Brenna took the message. Um, is there anyone that can fix their computers, as they have two down?
They're not tied computers, are they?
No, well, the rescue squad is owned by the town, so.
I was gonna say, the volunteers, did the rescue squad buy them, or the volunteers bought them?
I think the town bought them with billing money, probably. But I don't know who fixed their computers in the past, so I really didn't know what to tell them.
Okay.
So what, should I tell them?
Should we research that, see, maybe they can do that, find out where they came from?
Okay.
Who's responsible?
We have reached out to a firm, um, there's been discussion about audit of the whole billing process, and we've reached out to, to, uh, they're not called.
Bowers and Associates?
Bowers and Associates, I don't remember their new name, uh, to see if they can provide us a quote for doing an audit there, and we just have not hooked up with them. We called them, they called us, we haven't, we haven't connected, so, we'll hopefully get a little more direction on that, uh, before next week.
Resource recovery money, Roger, right?
Yes. Yeah, we can't, can't do anything with their money, you know? Just, just, it's rescue squad money, not volunteer money.
Okay.
That's the right one.
Thank you, just a question?
No, that's fine.
Uh, can I ask a question about airport?
Oh, sure.
Are you done on the airport?
Mm-hmm.
Um, did anybody get back to you, Mr. Supervisor, about landing fees report?
Well, you haven't heard back from Pat yet. He was working on it.
I thought I went to Eric to.
Yeah, so did I.
Help him to write up.
But, did, did Pat send us a proposal by?
Well, we need, um, a, um, you know, we need a process in place to.
To assess them, I understand, local law.
Assess them, to charge them.
Right.
Um, so he was supposed to be working on that, and then I think Pat was just gonna look around and.
No, Pat was, Pat was, as I understood it, Pat was gonna come up with a schedule, a fee schedule.
Oh, I don't know that he'll, I mean, he might tell you what they're charging in other areas.
I'm, the last, when I.
Pat's here on Friday.
What's that?
Pat's here on Friday.
He is?
Oh, okay.
I'll ask him.
What time?
Um, he'll be here by ten thirty at the airport, they're, uh, working on one of the projects, they have to come here and look at the.
Okay, all right, yeah, I'd like, I'd like to talk with him, sure.
Okay, I'll call tomorrow, let him know.
Can I talk to him too?
Sure.
Do you, uh, do you want us out of the meeting?
We should, yeah, why don't we do that?
What time would you like to? Joe, any questions?
Okay, any other questions for him through, did you say?
Yes, I have, uh, expect some plans for him to pick up if he's here.
One of the reasons I wanna talk to him is because he reached out to me a month ago, and this past year, when we had the airport committee together, we tried to put an event on at the airport. And it came down to Frank, Pat, and me in a room, and there was absolutely no way we could've ran that event, so it was canceled. And so he reached out to me because I had mentioned that maybe it needs to be run by an organization such as the fire department that has the volunteer help to do that. I, I, I brought it up at the meeting at the firehouse, and we, we will be voting on it at our regular meeting in November. But there seemed to be a lot of positive, uh, feedback of us taking it over, and Pat, the great guy that he is, would be more than willing to work with us with marketing and setting things up and regulations with TSA and FAA, and immediately he got me into contact with a gentleman from Duchess County Airport. And this guy apparently puts on a show and a half at Duchess County Airport, so I'll be reaching out to him. So I would like to say it's moving forward to possibly having a very nice show at our airport next August.
Great.
Let's hope it works.
Super, are you gonna try to get somebody as involved in car quotes, rid of, uh, off that too, I mean, uh, for guidance and coordination with them as well, or?
I, I already got guys interested in that, I got the contact, yep.
Okay.
Come up with a time, Joe?
Uh, the only thing I have right now, I'm booked for one to two, and I'm booked early in the morning.
I have ten a.m.
So you, you don't have time on Friday?
No, 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 the only time I'm committed, I'm committed from probably eight thirty to eleven thirty, and then I've got a one o'clock.
Let's take him to lunch.
I could meet with him at any time.
So we could do, we could do a noon meeting?
You wanna do it noon, or you wanna do it two?
This guy has to be like two thirty by the time I get back, but, yeah, you do two thirty before he leaves, I don't care, do it or two.
If you do, if you do noon, then he can get out of here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Should you do it noon?
You don't have to wait around.
Will he be done at the airport by then?
I'll ask him tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
Well, I'll help.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it in noon. Tentatively, yeah. Yeah, I wanna have about forty-five minutes to make my one o'clock, so.
Well, we can, we can let you ask what you're, what you want to do, and. How, if you, Tom, if you ask, talk to him.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. I don't have to work that.
In pain.
Noon, tentatively, yeah.
Every day's a holiday.
Noon Friday, where are we gonna meet, Frank?
I think we'll be in Joe's office.
Joe's office, yeah, great.
Is the weather?
Do you wanna keep these?
Uh, Frank, you wanna keep these?
Yeah, I'll keep them.
Okay, uh, hospital.
The.
Go ahead.
Oh.
I don't have any, I.
I'm just, we met, the, we met at the hospital, has, we, hospital met, we had a regular board meeting, and then the hospital's not meeting till Monday, so.
They, every few months, they can't make the third Monday or whatever it is, they.
No, it's always the time that I go on the third Monday.
That's due reporting, so, yeah, they meet Monday.
What's Bob's schedule, will he be here tonight as well, or no?
We didn't, he usually, he's supposed to be here every month, and I didn't really say anything to him, and we didn't put it on the agenda, but he probably should've been.
I have your question.
But, um.
That he did call and asked me if they were on the agenda.
Oh, really?
But I said you hadn't.
Oh, okay, so I missed. He should be on every month, he should, just, for his record, he should be on every month.
Okay.
Okay, all right, um, and I've got an answer for a question you emailed me about, I'll get back to you on that.
I think we should talk in executive session about a contract at the hospital.
Okay, all right, I can do that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Go ahead.
Do you wanna add something, Frank?
No, just let me get down, I got a question, that's all.
Okay, uh, MEV.
Next week.
I did talk to them about the, uh, letters are going out of the winterization program, they have known that those letters are going, I've gone out, and people should be getting them this week. I think they said. Okay, library.
Frank pretty much will touch on that.
Yeah, and, um, I'm trying to, I'm starting to work on getting quotes for the replacement of the, uh, wheelchair lift. It's non-functional. Some of the problems I'm running into is that companies will only quote the, the actual, the equipment and replacement. They do not, will not do any modifications to the shaft.
Right.
Yeah, that requires you, basically, they're saying they wanna, everything's gotta be done by a licensed architect and engineer, so that's the second part of it, that's the other half of the cost of this installation, so. I've contacted accessibility solutions and I contacted Vic, um, um, um.
Victory, victory.
Victory Lift out of Syracuse, they're coming next week to look at what we have.
Okay, all right.
I'll be there on the twenty-sixth, Dave Jones.
I think there's, did you guys get MEV advisory, Senator, uh, Gerfford's gonna be there tomorrow, making an announcement? You guys on the three, okay.
We just heard that he was gonna be in St. Lawrence County, no one told us, or he was actually gonna be, it was a weird announcement that we got.
Okay, he's gonna be at the library at one.
Okay.
So, if you wanna be there, you're welcome, as far as I know. All right, museum, what's new there?
Well, we met. On the Sunday? Yeah. They're planning their open house on November third at four thirty till seven. There's going to be, uh, some speakers, obviously gonna be open for viewing, take a look, and, uh, why do they're, they're gonna be serving.
That's our regular board meeting too, they're planning, I'm sure, by the second.
Um, I had, I haven't had a chance to send you, you guys an email, anybody an email. I asked Frank, a couple of months ago, Arielle Cosmo or someone said to me, we have two handicap parking spaces in the rear parking lot, but there's no handicap, no way for handicappers to access the museum from that spot. So Frank and I met there, was it yesterday, Frank, day before, I can't remember when it was. My thought initially was, why don't we build a ramp off, if you're looking at the rear entrance? Build a ramp off the top step that goes down to the sidewalk where the handicap spots are, and the sidewalk kinda widens out there anyway. Frank's done some investigating, there are, there are pre-made, pre manufactured ramps that we could, could use there, uh, we have a discussion. And I've not discussed this with the, the museum board has even know about this yet at this point, because I, like I said, I didn't get a chance to do the email yesterday. Frank thinks that maybe we just make, it would be easier access, and make more sense just to run the ramp straight in that entrance from the parking lot, rather than off to the side. Uh, I was a little concerned about Sorbo, he doesn't think it's gonna be a big problem. So, uh, to be continued, I, I think we should make that as accessible, as accessible as possible. The doors, obviously, are never, are gonna be, aren't power, um, anyone in a wheelchair's gonna need some help, I think that's a given. Uh, we can always put a buzzer there and think, uh, for someone to, to come and help, if somebody gets that. Not the ideal situation from an accessibility standpoint, but nonetheless, an improvement over what we have now. So, um, we, I don't know if we need to have a meeting per se, but certainly the museum board needs to know about it, and, uh, I'll try to get an email out tonight before they read it in the paper tomorrow, let them know we're talking about it.
They also, uh, have a conceptual drawing for the addition.
Oh, that's right, they brought that to me yesterday.
Yeah, I haven't, I didn't get a copy, but they, they have it there at the museum.
Yeah, I think they, I think they're making some changes, they showed it to me yesterday, they're gonna make some changes, I think they'll have that at the open house.
Yes.
So, we still need, depending on when we sell the building, we need to make arrangements for the hearse, for the weather. I know we're looking at a couple of different options, so I just wanna make sure we don't forget about that.
Well, I think what they're, the thought is now was leave it there as long as possible, so they don't have to move it twice.
There's also, isn't there other stuff still left there, that has to go someplace to?
There is, there is stuff left there.
They want storage, yeah.
The other thing that you promised me tonight is the RMP. The other thing that you promised me tonight is the RFP for the sale of the museum building.
Eric emailed me today, uh, emailed me about the local law, and I said, "Yeah, and how about the RFP we're supposed to get?" I haven't heard back, so, um...
Tick tock.
I know, it needs to, yeah, it needs to happen. Um, so I will follow up with them tomorrow.
I mean, do you think an RFP is necessary? Can we not just hire somebody?
I don't think, personally, I don't think it's necessary. Do you, do you, is anybody wanna make a motion to go out and hire somebody? I don't care.
Well, Eric had kinda suggested that Sam and I, uh...
Refuse her.
Right, understand that, yeah.
But I, you know, I mean, as we go along, you're gonna look at probably two months after you get an accepted purchase offer before you're gonna close. And we're getting into heating season and maintenance that might have to be done. I mean, if it gets cold, would we drain the?
I always shut the water off. Take the water and fill the toilets with, uh, fruit oil and freezing.
I, um...
I just would like to see this off the, um...
I agree, you had mentioned, uh, considering lowering the price as well.
And lower.
Something we wanna do right now, maybe we can do that now, I guess, right?
Do you, do you have an idea of the price you wanna market at?
What's that?
Do you have a price you wanna market it at?
I say ninety-nine.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with that?
Priceline was one thirty-five, but we haven't gotten any offer at all. Any interest?
Yeah, I have no problem, I mean...
Okay.
Scott, you wanna buy a museum?
I, I, that was the price before.
One thirty-five.
No, I don't know.
The price for one thirty-five.
Um, okay.
Nice building. Two acres.
I stick my head in the alligator jaws on a, on a regular basis. It appears to be the two busiest, no, there's three, busiest real estate offices in town are Cajun, Post, and DuFrank. I don't know if that's a fair assessment or not. So, do any of the three of us wanna make a motion to go with one of them? Or do we have one that we think is, uh... How you wanna handle, do you wanna?
I don't know how you handle that.
Wait for RFP, or you wanna go ahead and hire somebody? Only hurt your minute.
Come on, let's put ourselves out there and say, you ju- you just said you're the three busiest. Now you want me and Albert to put ourselves out there saying, "Okay, wire them, that means they're the best." I'm not doing that.
No, I'm not saying any, we're not, I don't think...
I thought we had some parameters about percentage of sale.
That was what Eric was supposed to develop in the RFP, so if you wanna wait for the RFP, we can maybe do that next week. Gonna wait, I have a problem waiting.
You gotta come back here on Wednesday anyway.
Right, okay, wait.
So we never really voted on the price change. I mean, if we, that, that might even spark some interest. I mean, ninety-nine thousand dollars is still in that building.
You wanna take formal motion, formal action on that? We could do that. Uh, any motion to lower the price of the museum to ninety-nine thousand?
You don't think it'll be a problem with the comptroller's office at all? Makes me have mark, added market for over a month.
I don't think so.
Eric spoke to him, said, you know, if you're not getting, if you can't get it for the one thirty-five.
I'm not afraid of the comptroller, honestly. He can't do anything to us.
I make a motion that we lower the price of the museum building to ninety-nine thousand dollars.
Okay, is there a second?
I'm gonna refuse myself from this, just...
Okay, is there a second beyond that?
Sure. I wanna get out, I wanna get back to tax laws.
Alright, uh, any further discussion, if you've had it already. All of the favors signified by standing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, abstentions.
Refuse myself?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay.
Which is it?
Abstain.
It's better to be on the record abstaining, in my opinion, too. Then there's nobody can question it.
That's right.
Okay, recreation, Albert.
Um, I, uh, ice is in, everything went well getting the ice, uh, they are booked, their ice times. Um, the marquee was funded by all donations. I don't think it's up yet. I knew it was, I'm going up soon.
No.
Right, but they said it was going up sooner than later, so...
Right, it's simple.
Um, so that, I think that's a great additive. I think the marquee will help them.
Where you had to have it.
Yeah, so...
It's gonna be a, a digital marquee, right?
Yeah, they'll be able to change everything right from the office, it's all.
Good.
Yep, and they got a really good price on it. So, I, other than that, every, everything, they went through, uh, they did discuss a few things about the beach, and, uh, they're looking into the beach about the fees and everything, and they're gonna come back with a recommendation on what they're gonna do on the fee, so.
On the parking fee?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And the pavilions they were talking about, too.
Okay. Alright, um, BDC, we had some discussion, anything else, yeah, what we talked about tonight? Good. Chamber of Commerce, obviously, you know, we had the harvest festival, uh, it was pretty successful. I think they can confirm that, a nice turnout, beautiful weather. Had to postpone it for a week. One incident, and Frank and Tom could probably, uh...
It was handled, I don't think it can be discussed. Done.
Okay. Um, so I have. Supervisor's, the councilman's report, I have one thing. There, there was an article in Today's Courier-Observer, I hope it went beyond just the one, the local paper, I don't know whether it did. There was a meeting, um, Saturday morning at nine a.m. in Canton for the Blue Way Trail Committee. Uh, it's sort of a work session. I would encourage everyone to attend if can. Um, this, we talked about before, the, the Blue Way Trail is an, an effort to promote all the communities along the Grass River, um, and encourage people to visit and, and view, view some of the, the attractions there. Um, it's a great effort. There's one already in place for the Asagashi River near Ogdenburg. There's one in place for the Racket River, uh, this will be the, the, um, one for the Grass River. And honestly, we need one for the St. Lawrence River at some point, too, but nobody's, nobody's bitten off. That's a big, a big chunk to bite off, no one bit that off yet, so. I would encourage you to attend, and, and anyone else, for the public or the media to be there as well. Uh, should be interesting, there'll be some good stuff coming up. Okay, uh, anything for the councilmen?
I have a few things, twenty-one order, whatever. Um, I, I should have probably sent an email out today, but I did mention it last week. We do have an opening on the planning board to fill for Curtis' position. Um, I had an interest from Scott Rogers, um, not the trooper that retired, um, C N A P D, Scott Rogers, um, is interested in the planning board.
You wanna make that a motion?
I will make that a motion.
Second.
Statement.
Perfect.
From, uh, Phil.
Well, as far as resignation?
Yeah, I don't...
He emailed that one time, yeah.
No, but it's, I, I have to have a signed, actual signed paper in my hand.
Let me, let me ask you this one, if you ever get one. I mean, that's the, the way in the old days, the planning board, you knew somebody resigned, was they stopped showing up.
Can answer that, don't know, but that's what I was told I need.
I sent, uh, the email copy, but it was...
I, I had that, but it's not signed.
So, if he stopped down, I'd ask, I sent him an email and asked him to stop down. He hasn't, but if he stops down and signs that...
Well, he won't be.
He can mail it to me.
Yeah. I, he can probably, whatever, he can print it, sign it. Can he just print it, sign it, and send it back? Is that be notarized by you, or?
No, it doesn't need to be notarized, it just needs to be signed.
I think he's coming back to sign that. Although he did go to Florida, then came back again, but...
He's coming family.
Face the storm, I run away to the storm.
I think we need to sign.
I second the motion.
Alright, so if we can do a contingent on receiving a written resignation.
Perfect.
Is that alright?
Okay.
Uh, Scott Rogers, who's on the South Racket, I'm not sure his address.
South Grass?
No, South Grass, no, South Grass, yeah, I spoke. Okay, uh, motion by Sam, seconded by...
Yeah, we'll see.
Albert.
Discussion, we've had enough. All of the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, abstentions. Sam, what else you got?
I have, um, a subject we discussed, uh, last couple of years, actually, and I believe you agree with me still, Joe. Um, but I actually brought it up last month as well. Um, our code one thirty-eight dash four under signs is no sign shall be placed on the right, right away, uh, public right away. Um, we discussed it before, last month, there really wasn't too many signs out. There's signs everywhere now. Frank's had a problem before with the wires getting found in the mowers, and it's public access property.
Yeah.
And they really shouldn't be there.
Do you want to, um, I know the village allows temporary signs for X number, however long.
Their code is the same as ours, actually.
They never put them on private property. It's not supposed to be on public.
No, they're not.
No. The, uh, no sign shall be placed on the public right away, one thirty-eight dash four.
We need to remove them, they can be removed.
We need to say just town roads?
That's from, that's code for the town, the state, and we can't control the village.
Right.
Except for them to, to place their own, uh...
Um, Frank, is it difficult for you to pull them when you guys are out and about? And then, um, we'll find out who they belong to, their name's gonna be on them, if they're political. And, um, we'll call them and call them and pick them up.
Okay, so that means, let me be clear with this. So, if there's a harvest sign out there for the harv, uh, they had a, the, uh, senior citizens had their, there's some out there of that. If, uh, Big Lots wants to do something, and I've seen them do it in the past. Uh, okay, is this not, so it's not politically motivated? Is that gonna be true for all this, and do we have a system that they're gonna be picked up all the time, or just prior to elections? Or how's this gonna work, so we're...
You have, you have Realtor signs, too, in our right of ways.
No. So, we gotta be really, really clear in this, and we have to have a system that's correct, and it has to be fair for everybody.
You've got business signs out there. Carpet, one, carpet cleaning guy, there's two or three of those guys around, I mean, it's... If Frank starts to pick them up, the highway department picks them up. They're gonna go to the highway bar, and they're gonna get left there, and you're stuck.
Plus the time to take them.
We like picking roadside signs every other day.
You know, I, the wrong thing is, you go once a week, it's saying it's up, but I'm thinking, but...
But, but what about Realtor signs? I mean, there are Realtor signs in our right of ways.
There's mailboxes in our right of way.
I'm not, no, I'm not being smart.
No, I don't, I agree.
I hear you.
It's a sign.
What is the, what?
Can we have COVID first, then?
Let's call them, and, uh, quote sign for...
You're also supposed to U, U F B O before you put a sign in, too.
If they put a sign in an electrical cable, they'll find out.
Or, or a gas line, 'cause sometimes they can be that close to the, the surface.
Yes, again.
When you see somebody driving a, a stake in the ground, and I've seen it before, they could hit a gas line, or a cable line, or a, you know, a Verizon five-rotte cable. I'm not, I'm not making this up. No, no, I, I went to the training.
You're right.
And that's one of the concerns they got is during election seasons, are putting signs in along the roads and utilities. But how do you police it?
Yeah, how do you police it? How do you make it fair for everybody, not just political season?
And I don't think that taxpayer dollars should be used to go around and pick up somebody's signs that they put there either. The person that put the signs there should be picking them up.
They, and, and they, I can understand maybe for elections, but they never coming back when they come up.
No, I see wires there for, so you can pick them up with a lawnmower.
Yeah. When we pick roadside signs, we'll pick them up, if they're burned down, or if they're still sticking in the ground, and it's...
What do you wanna do? How do you wanna handle it?
I don't know. I mean, I don't think we should spend taxpayers' money to pick up signs that somebody placed all over, all over the, uh, uh, corners of the road.
I don't know, I don't disagree with you.
So I guess we're gonna have to address, uh, whoever the signs down and have them pick up.
Surely we can call them and ask them to pick them up, but as Tom points out, we can do that with everybody. Which, I mean, businesses and all that kind of, and Realtors and everybody else. I, I, I don't care, unless you wanna do, we can do that.
Well, the code is reserved for a reason, right?
Yeah.
Um, if you wanna do anything different, we'd have to change the code.
Yeah.
Although it does...
Who enforce it?
Code enforcement officers.
There you go. Turn it over to them, that's what they said last. Their responsibility.
And then, um, in addition to that, the signs shall be displayed only during the sale and shall be removed within twenty-four hours after completion of the sale. So I'm assuming that's for garage, I don't know, for garage sales or house sales.
Are there, are there other, I thought political signs were included in the code, too, somewhere?
No, there's just one liner. It's not in there. I didn't see it. There's one liner that says, "No signs."
Yeah, "No lighted signs shall be used." The sign, then it says, "The signs shall be displayed only during the sale and shall be removed within twenty-four hours after completion of the sale."
What, what, wait, what's, what precludes that? What comes before that? It says?
It says, "No signs shall be placed on public right away."
Well, how does it say, "The sale"? How, in other words, how does it say?
I don't know. I, I really don't know. It's something we need to look at and probably rewrite.
And as we said before, we need, there's a bunch of these things we're addressing in the code. We gotta get this thing in there about charging ten bucks a day, or whatever, for dogs, too. And we were looking at, we were reviewing the code last I knew, right?
Yeah.
So you wanna wait to do it all at once? I didn't want, that's what I'm saying, is, I, we need to decide if we're gonna do something about it tonight or next month?
I'm just saying, we brought this up before.
Yes.
You agree with me?
Yeah.
And, um, that's maybe just our opinion, I don't know.
No, I don't disagree.
I am absolutely in favor of following the code, as long as we have. It's fair for everybody. We have a solution for picking them up. Or we have a solution for going to tell that person, to notify that person, you can't have that sign there. We've gotta have that in place before we just do it randomly, I think. I gotta make sure first.
I'll put a snow, take care of it.
That's even dragged out, right?
I mean, I, I can call court enforcement about it, but then again, how do you want them to handle it? Do you want them to pull it? Do you want them to call the people?
I guess a public service announcement would be the best thing to do, from Andy and Bob.
I could do a press release, too, for that.
Well, there you go.
There you go.
That'd be perfect. I, I can't see spending taxpayers' dollars to pick up signs, so. A press release, I think, would be the, uh, perfect, uh, answer this time.
Okay. What, uh, what section of the code do I find it? Where do I find that?
Uh, one thirty-eight dash four. If we just go to U code three sixty and punch in signs, we don't have it all.
Okay, what else we got? Anything else?
Joe, just one question. I, I know the board's approved the continuation of using CNS as our engineering group at the airport. Is there any documentation that has to go with that, or how do we, how do we?
I think there is.
I don't think they ever sign, I think they were just named.
I don't think there's anything to sign.
I don't think we ever actually got it.
Because you can have more than one. We can have more than one, so...
I mean, do we send the letter, or is somebody saying that, you know, they're, for the next...
If everybody wants it, it'll be in the minutes.
Okay, I, I just...
I mean, I'm asking, you know?
I can do it, but then, send him the resignation.
Frank, we're gonna call, we're gonna call Pat tomorrow.
Okay.
Ask him what procedure we went through.
Okay.
Because we interviewed, what, four or five, yeah, four or five requests.
I remember, yeah, requests, or...
We selected CNS. Just ask him if he, he would, I'm sure he would do it.
I can give him a copy of the section in the minutes that have that as a motion.
Alright, I'll ask him tomorrow, I'll talk to him. I, I just was curious, just, I mean, normally you have to have some kind of, something to say in signing, you know?
I think so, but okay, well, we'll find out what we know in the past.
I'll find out, I'll find out.
Alright, what else we got?
So I just Saturday night, uh, attended the, uh, Mecena Volunteer Fire Department, uh, annual banquet.
Yeah.
Which is, precludes the, um, week of, uh, fire prevention, and we have a certificate appreciation, the town council, town vicinity. Uh, Joseph Bray, supervisor from Mecena Volunteer Department.
Alright, nice, I couldn't make the banquet, unfortunately, but yeah, nice, nice, thank you. Good. I got all this fan to put in my office, I don't have any wall space, so. That's nice, appreciate that. Good, okay, uh, we, apparently we need an executive session, um, public comment. Anybody have anything? If not, then I would entertain a motion to go to the... Somebody say something?
Press.
Oh, the Republic, you guys have anything for us?
Not cool.
They're not usually shy.
What are you about?
They're not usually shy about asking, huh, about asking. Uh, okay, uh, I entertain a motion to execute a session for apparently contractual discussion. Discussing a contract. Need a motion?
Oh, so move.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion and second, all of the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sides, abstentions. Uh, no actions anticipated, I don't believe.
Oh, it's too bad, Bob, an hour and a half.
Hour would've been better, huh, Bob?
It was two hours.
Two hours of the budget, that gives the budget.
Tim Curry, twenty minutes.
Takes Matt LeBeere seven.
It must not have a meeting then.
So, no, so, it'll be forty and fourteen.